Oh, yeah, okay, we're good. Okay, um, let's call a meeting to order. We will start with the secretary's report, please.
I don't have anything to add to the, um, notes that were taken and passed or emailed around. Just a little bit more detail on all of the, um, the items that we discussed. And I will say, just to be, just because I strive to be as honest as I possibly can, under new business, there's a technology plan, and I didn't think that you voted on it, but your minutes said you voted on it, so I'm completely fine with having it voted on and accepted. But I just wanted to, you know, I, I just feel like, I would feel weird if I didn't, you know, wasn't the most completely honest that I could possibly be about everything that goes on. Answer any questions that might have now or at any other time.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I looked at, I thought it was fine, so I didn't get accepted.
Any discussion? The secretary, I, oh.
Doug's the secretary.
Oh, Doug's the secretary tonight, okay.
I've got nothing.
You've got nothing.
I just think.
She's got nothing. Okay, treasurer's report?
Did we get a second and a vote in there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Actually, you said discuss, we didn't vote on it.
No, I said the secretary, uh, secretary cast the vote.
Uh, oh, I have a, uh, an additional, I realized too late, and I apologize. This is the revenue summary. You got a expenditure summary, but not a revenue summary. There's one for everyone.
Thank you.
We're basically, we're right on target, right? Not to beat the dead horse about last year and the, um, the sort of state of the funds. They're, they're doing, the, the, budget-wise, we're doing fine on expenditures and revenues. Um, there are no huge surprises. As you know, the market isn't great, and I don't want to confuse any issues between the funds that are already ours and the funds that the board controls. I do have some sum totals for the YHB funds. Those stand at three hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-nine, I'm sorry, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. And that's twenty-five hundred up from last month. Wheeler's at one forty-four, six seventy-three. The Plainville Fund is at a hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and ninety. And the Legacy Fund is currently at thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five. That's up from about twenty-nine to in June of 2015. Calendar just hasn't been nailed yet, I haven't received the calendar monthly statement yet. But there's no huge surprises. And I'm working closely with the accounting office, who are, they're crazy as all get out this time of year because of audits, to make sure that everything is, uh, all of my ducks are ready to roll. And again, I'll, um, it's almost coming up on budget time to do the new budget, so I have a whole big, um, chunk of work to get done for next fiscal year. And I do, I know we straightened out some of the expenditure lines. We got them a little more realistic and a little more divvied up in terms of what the content of those lines should look like, so I'm hoping to do the same thing for revenue as well this next year, so that the town understands we depend on X, Y, and Z, and as opposed to A, B, and C. You know, it won't shock them, it won't, you know, they, they'll completely understand, but I just want to make sure that, that the papers, on paper, that were as healthy as we should be.
Well, we don't want to be super healthy when we go to the board.
Right, to the, to the, to the. I do have a couple of big asks that I would like to ask them, but, um, I'm not quite, I'm certainly not ready to pull the trigger on anything, but I would really, I really think we could benefit from another part-time. I could benefit from any staff that they want to throw me, but I'm going to ask for one part-timer, um, and just some other, um...
With the, I'm sorry, um, part-time hours would be, what, what hours, what kind of day are you looking for? Is it going to be flexible at all, or?
In terms of what the position does?
Mm-hmm.
My hope is that I can continue what I'm doing now, which is trying to cross-train everybody to do everything, at least a little bit. I mean, sometimes it's just not possible.
I'm more speaking of hours of the day.
Oh, um, depends on the person, really. I mean, if they're a really high quality.
Could be late, late afternoon or evening.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it could be.
Can't be your son.
It could be anything.
It can't be my son?
No, because I tried to get my daughter in when I was on the board, they wouldn't let me.
Really?
Really?
Yeah.
That's usually pretty standard, but I don't know.
She's just a hard-working kid.
I know. I couldn't get my daughters in either.
I, listen, my wife can't get me into the city government, so it isn't going to end up making her work.
It's not just the state, that's.
It's not just the state.
I go to work for their minimum pay in New Britain on a moment's notice.
Just so you don't get your hopes up, it happened to me.
It's what I was asking.
Yeah, I figured that's.
I'm trying to get them, get them to go to work, you know, at some point here.
Not here, at work.
He's young, isn't he?
Sixteen.
Um, okay, the library, so did we kind of start? We did the treasurer's, I need a vote on the treasurer's report.
I'll move to accept it.
A second?
Second.
Treasurer's report, thank you. And we'll have the secretary cast a vote. And we're on the librarian report, the web, website demonstration, oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Good.
It's all new, it's, it, there's no, um, the feedback we've received so far anecdotally has been uniformly positive, but completely not surprising. I mean, it's, it's just basically a decent, basic library site for this day and age. We will add to it, we will take away from it. It'll be, most of our work product will go on this site, and that's good. Um, the thing that is most attractive, um, to us and to most of the people that we, um... I knew this was going to be hard to go.
How are you going to do this?
It's going to be a piece of cake. See how, see how there's no scroll up and down? There's really just one page. It reduces clutter, and it reduces, like, scrolling through a site so many times, and you just kind of forget where you are. There are multiple paths to get to one area of content. So, for example, we try to list our hours and phone number on, um, whatever page you're on, but you can also get to that kind of stuff from, um, Contact Us, or About Us, or whatever it is. So, there's multiple hover dropdowns as well. Um, the sliders are, there is, there is not really a limit on the sliders. It's as many as we would like. Um, we just are going to put programming-type stuff, newsy-type information. We're going to push a lot of digital things as we get more into that world. So, GVRL is a big one for us. It's not like the rest are normal, it's not like the rest are boring, they're just regular programs, though. So, that's the monthly, um, movie from the Friends. Can he do it? He can. And then, this is a movie that was made in Plainville, shot here in Plainville. I have no idea what it means or why it's called Mint on Card, but I'm looking forward to finding out. The New Britain Symphony Orchestra is coming, so these are the, um, the big event pieces and the big newsy-type pieces that are coming in. The GVRL, if I can get, is just super cool. Now, you can have your library card saved. If you're in the building on one of our machines, it just goes right in. But it's keyed to only Plainville residents. We only bought it for Plainville. It's not like everybody in the world can use this, otherwise Gail would be losing a lot of money. Bing, bing. But then, all of these, uh, we bought a collection. They're ours forever. Once you click on them and want to download them to your, you can download them in PDF form to your own computer. You can integrate them with your Google Drive, so you can have them wherever you go. You can also do just bits and pieces of them. So, just for example, what is this? What's that called?
That looks like for dummies.
We did buy a lot of them, starting on, starting an online business for dummies. So, we, oh, you know what, let me just back out and do, show you it just quickly, if I can do it. So, we bought a lot of the, we bought some for dummy stuff. We bought some health titles. Some of it was just free or really cheap, so we just put it in there. And we're going to add to these, and one cool thing we can do in the sliders or anywhere else is we can take a grouping of these and make a particular, um, little, um, icon of just those, like, just business books, or just history books, or just whatever. It's, it's mostly non-fiction, you're not going to find James Patterson and stuff like that in there. We'll have those in other venues. And we try to get some testing books and some health-type books, like Living with Diabetes, or like, What to Do If You Find This Thing on Your Body, or whatever it is, you know, like, I'm being a little bit facetious, or, um, tech stuff, and a lot of travel books, actually, too. Those were a good deal, and it's very popular in the community. So, anyway, once you go through, laptops for seniors for dummies. So, you click on that, basically, you're basically reading at this point. You can, I'm sorry, my, my big fat.
No, you're fine, I, I can see, don't worry about it.
So, you can go through the table of contents, click on whatever, and this laptop is very slow. I don't want to hurt its feelings, but this thing is, like, older than some of my children. So, here's the cover and more information and stuff like that, but then you've got... If you clicked on a little, first easy steps, blah, 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 getting started, that's the... When you get there, it's the actual content of the book.
You know, is this, is this going to be made private just for the user?
So, here's the actual content of the, of the book. That's like the same as the print version of the book.
That's going to go on Kindle, will that go on Kindle as well?
Yeah. Um, you can listen to it if you're a person with any kind of visual, um, issue.
Is this going to be made private just for the user? I mean, how do you protect the person who is reading certain books? And that protects them from anybody else seeing?
Yeah, it does. I mean, this flat content, unless you're...
If you want, if you want to use any of those, or like that, he said you can just download it as a PDF to your computer and then send it away.
Right, but one of the big things with Peter was nobody would ever know what book they ever borrowed. He would protect that with his life, remember? And I'm just saying, is this also protected? Say, if the police came in and said, I want to see what Kathy's reading, and I think she's been reading How to Make a Bomb.
She totally has.
Understanding Internet basics. Understand what the internet is, two hundred and sixty-eight.
That's how libraries.
Explore different types of internet connections, two hundred and seventy.
Personal sledgehammer, they'll just break the computer.
Right, that's, Peter was right, he was willing to go to jail for that.
It's not anything, it's not unusual, it's just how the profession works.
Yeah.
You can also, let me just get this quick, so I can do this, uh, you can download an MP3 of that. If you do click on download, I believe it asks you what version, you'll know.
Oh, how do you want?
Google Drive, HT, HTML or PDF. And one thing that's kind of cool, let me make sure I can do it. You also have citation tools. Um, you can highlight stuff if you want to, like, I just highlighted some text. I think I'll be able to actually highlight it like that. Did it work?
That's nice. Are you in print, too?
If you want to, yeah. Oh, I see. So, it highlighted that color in yellow, you can pick from any color. And create, no, it's like, blah, 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 blah. And when you save it, those highlights are not saved, so it's...
Oh, that's nice.
So, you can find it.
Sort of next gen, basically. Um, not all of the resources digitally that we're, not all of the digital resources that we will get will work like this. Like, Uplaa is just access to the material. Overdrive, you just have access to the material. We don't own that, this we do. Most digital content is leased to libraries, much like Apple Music. Nobody, nobody owns it except Apple, or whoever owns it. So, the best we can do is lease it for you. But we're looking into lots of different sort of avenues to get that demographic that we don't really have. We have a lot of people who are of a certain age and up, and a lot of young families, but we don't have a lot of folks right in the middle of that, busy folks. Other than coming in to get their library card, there will be a certain percentage of the population that will just never come into our library, they'll just use the online. So, we're considering this a branch, this is a digital branch for our library. Is it big doings? Kind of. I mean, it's not the most revolutionary thing in the world, all libraries do this. We were just way behind for a few years, sort of like a deferred maintenance thing. So, this is good, it's a big sigh of relief to get this off our plate and start moving on, you know what I mean? We can move on to other things. Programs we've had, um, if, I mean, I'm, I don't mean to rush through the librarian's report, but I don't want to, you know, talk ad nauseam about anything. Past and upcoming programs, you probably all received, I hope anyway, the Friends Calendar, and that contains both Friends programs and our sort of regular programs. We're doing a lot of new types of things, solo, and intentionally separate from the Friends, but trying to work, again, in concert. We don't want to, we want to be able to have a sustainable program that doesn't hinge on Friends membership. We want to be able to reach out to the community and have community programs, not just programs that are attended by the Friends.
Right.
We love that, but we have to be more than that. So, the numbers are lower. You know, if we get ten people to a program, it's fantastic. But when you put that up against the, the sort of Black Bears program that the Friends did with sixty people, we go, you know, I'm heartbroken. But ten people for a program is actually pretty good in library land, so it's a dose of reality.
Why do you think that, do you think that they advertise more?
No, it's just kind of like what they...
It's the content of the program sometimes, yeah.
It's kind of geared for them, it's like, you know what I mean? It's a club, more of a gang, really, mentality, a gang mentality, where they, all the gang members come and they do.
They've got a mailing list that gets sent out as well.
It's social time, it's seeing friends, it's all that kind of stuff.
Well, it's on my, on the side, this side of my head. We got someone else's mail last week that lives down the street from us, they live at seventeen. I live at seven. And the one was cut off. I looked at it and going, that's not my name. Just they need to keep an eye when they put the mailing labels on.
Those labels are the hardest thing about them.
Oh, their labels are difficult.
I know, I do it in my printer.
It makes me crazy.
Yeah, no, I just, just, well, I'm looking, going...
Speaking, speaking about that, um, this chica chica boom boom tool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why didn't you just ask the, the Friends for the money?
Well, I can and would, and, you know, it'll be fine, but this is like a, I just wanted to do something. You know what I mean? I'm, I try, I'm trying to do these micro fundraisers or little fundraisers. I believe in generating money, I don't want to depend on the Friends for every single dollar, you know what I mean? I want to try to generate stuff.
So, when something comes up that you really want to go?
I mean, to be honest, Scout's Honor, I was like, I went to the wish list that I have, and I'm like, what's doable? You know, it could have been anything, and that was like the sort of sexiest thing that I had. I mean, there's other things on there, like, I want a database, or whatever, but, um, I figured for the, you know, a little community fundraiser, that might be like fun and funny, and, you know, time and blah, blah, blah. So, I want to try to do as much as I can to raise awareness, funds, support, blah, 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 and not woefully depend on the Friends. And I know I look at you every time I mention Friends, because it is kind of funny.
Well, she is the friend.
But it is funny, but I, I do recognize that I do that.
We appreciate that, because we're not a bank, so.
That's the thing, and I, I...
We do support most things.
My need, you know, like, last month, they very generously gave me a display case, but it's a, I was, I felt a little funny.
Thank you.
So, I felt a little funny about asking for something that's not really, I mean, is that, I don't know, I mean, it was just kind of like, it was incredibly generous, but I felt like that's something, I didn't want to push my own agenda. I want this to be a community thing, so that's kind of where that stems from.
Okay.
Just remember, our Friends are our Friends.
It's like, especially when we've had our seniors, we'd have to get rid of programs.
Were you here, I served when the newsletter, did you do newsletter?
Yes, I did the newsletter.
So, I served, what, I served cake and coffee.
Yes, you did, you did.
It also, it also go a long way for all the Friends who aren't here, you know, and obviously you can be. The word of that is that if we're doing as much as we can on our own to raise something, and we still need something to get, easier to go to them and say, see, we did this.
That's right. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
You know.
And that happens sometimes, you know, Erica will do something, but she might need just a little bit more.
Right.
Yeah. She's a wizard.
Okay, are we under library activities?
Friends of the library activities. Um, they are back from the summer break, obviously, where I just got the material for the, there's a program about witches coming up, I think it's on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, that sounds interesting.
But I don't have a lot to share.
That's in conjunction with the historical center, right, yeah.
So, over the course of the next days, I'll do press releases and, like, PR activities.
Yeah.
I try to put them in as many, I talked about this ad nauseam last time, I think. I try to put them in as many places as I possibly can, like, we got some good, when, um, community contributors to the Hartford Current tend to come out fairly well. I think it's in Library, Library News in the back of the packet, like, we launched the new website. It's a, it's a, you know, I mean, I wrote it, I uploaded it to Hartford Current. They, they pulled the trigger on proving it, but, you know, it's not like they sent a reporter. Although, Lisa Capobianco came to the new website and what it all means, and she's working on, working up the whole story. So, it's kind of fun.
Well, the little papers really need something interesting to put in themselves. I mean, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday are pretty interesting.
They're getting, they're getting very thin.
Yeah, they're getting very thin.
It's a current, if you know.
Okay, under old business, um, you have Legacy Fund?
Just because we didn't ever decide on anything, but, and it's just to keep it on your radar, that's the only reason.
All right, yeah.
I think, they did send a, um, distribution check to me, two hundred and ninety-two dollars, but, and I, I sent it across the street before, before the bell struck, and I went, wait a minute, so I'm going to get that back.
Oh, okay.
And send it back to them, and I sent Mr. Soper a, uh, email, which he has not responded to. I'm just assuming it's just such small potatoes for him.
Yeah, well, I'm sure, yeah, that's gas money, yeah.
The carpet came in twelve hundred dollars, under budget, so no proofing's money was touched. Everybody's happy about that. I did send them a Friends request, I don't know if they responded to it, but, um...
There is no new business, but I'm going to bring up new business, because I think we really need chairs. And I think, yeah, of those kinds of chairs. And I think if you try, like, um, we have found a lot when we had a company, that we went to these, um, they're not secondhand furniture stores, but they're the ones that the insurance companies
Right.
send all their stuff to after they redo their entire building every five years or whatever. And most of the stuff doesn't even look touched. What's that, there's a couple of, yeah, yeah.
I can't remember the name of it.
I can't remember the name of it either. Hartford just, not, it's...
No, we used to send our stuff.
Stretch with it all.
Office, Office.
It's on New Park Avenue.
Yeah. OBEF or OB, but you can get, I mean, and that's where Sean does all of her furniture stuff.
I've got good referrals from her, I'm going to try to pull one up now, I don't remember if I can.
Yeah, because I know Sean gets most of the furniture there.
And they have a lot of furniture.
And they have a lot, and if they don't, if they don't have what you want, they'll find it. They'll, I mean, you just put in your wish list, and they'll look for it for you.
I'm glad we're on the same page, because I don't want to, I know you know I don't want to break the bank.
Yeah.
Um, and I know you know that I want to get good deals that are sturdy, and that I would be proud of my mother sitting in this chair, you know what I mean?
I mean, they can be folding chairs, they don't have to be the ones like this, they could be, they're, I mean, they're more difficult to work with, but...
Yeah, I did find some good, they're similar, but they're, um, like a mesh, a very tight mesh, so it seems like they would be clean of all, I've seen a lot of libraries have them, I can't remember. I think they're called Daylight or something like that. And I was starting to look for prices, but I hadn't found anything fantastic. I'm trying to think what the company did.
Yeah, I can't think of it. Office Value, something, that's it, Val, something.
You can, you can reach out to Corporate Furniture Systems in Bloomingfield.
Yeah, one of them's Office Value, or...
Yeah, I'm looking for that, but it seems you, you, there's one called Corporate Office Furniture Systems CT.com.
It was, the one I'm thinking of is called Transfer Enterprises, that's where...
That's not the one I'm thinking of either.
South Windsor, that's where Sean gets a lot of...
Sean gets a lot there, okay.
They were very, um, thrilled about that, and it's...
Maybe they're not in business, because they used to advertise them all the time.
Yeah, that was a while ago.
Transfer Enterprises.
Yeah, it's like, oh, that's one, it's TE Desk, I was like, it's TE something.
Transfer Enterprises.
So, it's pre-owned, but, um, gorgeous.
They can advertise and turn out their name.
Gorgeous stuff.
There's a, I mean, and they have good stuff.
That's in Manchester, Transfer.
Yeah, Manchester, South Windsor, I'm trying to...
I think it's important that the, I mean, you wouldn't have Thanksgiving dinner at your house and know where to sit. So, we can't help a program and know where to sit.
TE Desk.
TE Desk dot com, yeah. We, um, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if it's good or bad, what it says about the community, but we're sort of the crown jewel of the little downtown area, you know what I mean? And I want to stay there.
Yeah, we fought really hard to make it that way.
We've got the best-looking building, we've got the most people, we're a draw, we're safe, we're a lot of things, we're a lot of good things.
Yeah, we're doing everything we can to keep it better, we don't have to like, but...
I mean, I haven't looked in detail, it's on my list of things to do to get there. I mean, it looks fairly generic, but it doesn't have to be fancy.
No, it just has to, no, it just has to be a chair, just be a chair.
A comfortable chair.
Yeah, that doesn't look like those that you brought in there.
And I am so sorry, I, I know...
It's a good thing you had, five more people have seats, I mean...
Yeah, I know that you prob, like, it hurts me, because I know you probably worked very hard to raise the money to get those chairs X many years, but I'm just like, ah, some of them are just a foot.
Fifteen to eighteen years of wearing, sitting on the chairs.
And spilling, and, you know.
And there's probably a few more you could pull out if you, if you look.
Probably is, yeah.
Actually, I'm kind of glad that they're all out. I was telling Emmanuel, who was helping me set them up, okay, tomorrow I'm going to separate them into A, B, C. C or we go. B or like, maybe we can salvage these. A, these are fine, so, it's kind of funny. But I also don't want to pitch any of them, because I'm like, ah, what if we have another big problem?
That's right.
I think every chair we have is out in there, and it's like a hundred and one or something like that.
Okay.
Which is probably as many people as that room should hold.
I think it's rated for one-twenty, I think.
Well, it's more than a hundred and twenty people in there.
And we should have a hundred and twenty chairs.
No, we won't tell anyone.
Yeah, did they?
Okay, is there anything else under new business?
I just, question on the Wi-Fi.
Yes.
What's happening with that?
Uh, the, um...
Wasn't there an app?
The hardware is being ordered, um, they're called...
And you're thinking we'll get this easier in certain parts of the library, right?
Yeah, we'll set it up there, I have to rely on the professionals at the board event, but everything they're saying is like, this is the way to go. They're much more powerful and much more, um, they have much more reach, but they're also more advanced, and they'll be able to tap into the CEN connection that we have, and not the old Comcast, um, cable connection. That's not a bad, like, the cable connection is not a bad thing, but it's the slowest network, and I can guarantee you there's a hundred and twenty people in that room over there going...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's true, too. And people want everything.
You can hit one of those LED streetlights and put it over the, over that building.
That's right.
Yeah.
That should be in by, they're saying, they're saying at the end of the...
Some, some of it's...
Is that, is that the lights here, too? The lights in the parking lot?
No, no.
They're putting them on the, on...
Oh, on the big ones?
On the big ones, that they've replaced with the LED lights, they're putting the Wi-Fi in there. While, while you were thinking of the other one, is Value Office Furniture.
That's it.
Ah, that's it.
That's it.
That's on New Park Avenue.
New Park Avenue, yeah. I knew it was Value something.
You flip through enough of these things, you'll like it.
I knew, something with Value, yeah.
That's up at, yeah, New Park Avenue in West Hartford, okay.
Doug, new business reminds me that last month, when we were walking out in the parking lot, it's very dark outside for people who walk along at night.
They make these things called flashlights.
Well, then give them to patrons when they leave.
There should be, there should be maybe one more pole up there.
We've been arguing that forever, and so I thought we changed the lights, I thought we did something.
We did, but there's still not enough going to be at that lot, there should be at least one or two more.
They're like far apart from each other. There, there are areas where... I wonder would be better if it was on the grass, some type of light that comes up or something, because you're right, it is dark walking down there.
It is. Go ahead, Jay, what do you?
I just want, it's Seventy-Four Park Road and I'm at Park Avenue.
Okay, Seventy-Four Park Road. Now, let me just be clear, we're talking about heading...
To the other parking lot, Tom parking lot.
If you go out this way, yeah, if you're going now.
The driveway, if you will, going down. Yeah, the driveway, if you will, going down.
Yeah, the driveway going down. It's spooky.
It is.
It's terrible. I remember we were talking about.
Yeah, because last week, the three of us were walking there and said, this is.
That'd be something, just the size, I don't know. It's got to be something to light it up.
Well, even from the building, even from the roof of the building, have a spot that goes down.
Yeah, that's another thought, yeah.
That would be less expensive to do.
Even the safety committee, somebody will come in here and know what we need, and give you some. But it is, it's dark. And last month was September. It's not going to get lighter going forward.
Okay.
Let's see if it takes as long as for my sign out front out there.
I have.
The Kathy sign.
Things do take a long, it's like painting that. That was, do you know, I remember when I first noticed it. Do you remember when the stairwell was done? Now, how long ago was that? Well, I'm walking in from the parking lot, and there were people in front of me that said, that is disgusting. I thought this was a new library. And I'm like, so I'm looking. And they're standing there pointing to the roof. I never looked at the roof. I looked at it and thought, that is pretty shabby looking. Now, that's years ago, so it takes a while. But you still got to put it on the list, or you'll never get it.
Right, I do have some still outstanding things with the Winston grounds, but those guys, when they come over, they're total pros, and they're great in what they do. They assess, then they go back and get exactly what they need, and they're gentlemen. And that's really not, not the standard for town employees, I can tell you.
Super.
Okay, anything else to come? Okay, I bought a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I will move to go home, where I was seconded. Good for you.
Wow, my husband's been wondering what I've been doing after all these other meetings.